Our next item on the agenda is our informal comments. Martha Helms.
Good evening, my name is Martha Helms. I reside at 1615 Thornhill Drive. My mailing address is Monroe, North Carolina, but I live in the Unionville community. First off, I would like to say that I come here not only tonight as the parent of three children in the school system, I come here as a PTO president. Never did I think my job was going to be so emotional and so political in the last few weeks. I have been flooded with emails from people who voted for Jerry Simpson, Todd Johnson, and Jonathan Thomas from the Unionville community because we are tired of the western part of the county getting everything and you are failing us. And I mean you are failing us big time. It will matter come next election time. It will matter. We operate on the belief at our school that our children deserve better. Some of you have children at our school and for you to even fathom that you can live without a teacher assistant in elementary school in the kindergarten or first grade class is unfathomable. You come and you volunteer for five days a week for three hours if you vote no to this eventually. You come and do what these teachers here do every day. At Unionville School, teacher assistants, every child just gets the work of teacher assistants. Not only children with special services, every child benefits from a teacher assistant in Unionville School. I know the county manager is going to propose no, but she's not an elected official. You are elected officials and you answer to us. We are your constituents. Please remember that. As Speaker earlier said, the children are a pawn here and it's not fair. They're the ones who are going to suffer in this fight. This is who's going to suffer. Suffer. The quality of education is going to drop. You may not see it immediately, but the EOG scores are going to go down. I have a child myself, I have a child who's academically gifted in the middle school, and I have another child in the middle school who was at Unionville Elementary School who had the benefits of a teacher assistant to get good grades on the EOG. She struggled. She's making straight A's now. Had it not been for the work of these teachers and teacher assistants, she would have never been where she is today. I paid for Sylvan, but those teacher assistants at Unionville gave her so much more. So as I told two or three of you in emails, there's politicians and there's great leaders. You can either decide to be the politician and, you know, answer what you promised on your platform, or you can make some hard decisions, tough decisions, and become a great leader and let us remember who you are, your name, two years from now and that you did something for the kids of this county. Remember that. The cost of not educating these kids is too high. The workforce is going to be terrible here. The schools are going to go downhill and it's going to hurt every taxpayer in this county. Every taxpayer is going to be affected by this. Thank you.
Dawn Moritz.
Good evening, my name is Dawn Moritz. I reside at 305 South Elm Street, Marshall, North Carolina. My phone number's a secret. And I am also a teacher at Benton Heights Elementary School of the Arts. Funding fatigue. We're all tired, but not defeated. Camouflage is used in the Army for protection for many different reasons on many different things. On uniforms, to cover equipment, in order to protect valuable weapons. It's very effective from a distance, but the closer you get, the easier it is to see what's being protected or hidden. The same can be said for the available funds accrued through taxes, leases, and so forth to Union County. It has been stated that tax money needs to be used for the people. Those in the military know that it takes every single person of every single rank in order to make a military campaign and mission effective. It is for this reason that we have gathered the troops, so to speak, together from one end of the county to the other. Not only are students, parents, staff members present tonight, but since your May 11th budget meeting, several foot soldiers have done reconnaissance and have gone out into the field to determine how the people in each municipality feel about funding teacher assistants in Union County public schools. The reply has been governing bodies of Waxahaw, Stallings, Marshall, and Wingate have either sent formal resolutions or letters of support requesting that you accept the request of full funding by Union County Public Schools. The Army has a tagline, "Be all you can be," and we know that you are more than what you've shown so far, so I'm going to inspire you during my last minute of time with my own rendition of the Army National Anthem. Are you ready? (singing) Over hill, over dale, as we hit the dusty trail, and the people keep searching for funds. In and out, hear them shout, counter march and ride about, as the people keep searching for funds. Then it's hi, hi, ho, taxpayers come and go. How long can Union schools stay strong? For wherever you go, you will always know that the voters keep voting along. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Parker. I'm a resident of Union County. My address is 718 White Oak Lane, and that is in Stallings. I'm here to speak on the topic of school funding, and with me is my friend Taylor Rain. We are at a crossroads in Union County, and you have the power to decide which way our county is going to go. You could decide to deny funding for teacher assistants, which will increase the unemployment rate, will hurt the economy because unemployed citizens have less money to spend, and the quality of education that we provide in this county will go downhill. On the other hand, you could fully fund the teacher assistant programs, program, which in turn helps the economy, helps the schools, and will improve the people's feelings of goodwill towards the county government. It's a simple matter of cause and effect, which even fourth graders like Taylor understand. A Wingate University study found that the public school system in Union County is the number-one economic driver in the county. That cannot be ignored. The funding for the school system can easily be found in the $54 million lump sum payment from the hospital that is sitting in the bank. That money has not been earmarked yet. It needs to be earmarked for our schools. Another point I'd like to make is that the schools are doing without money that the voters gave them from bonds passed in 2006. Your job as county commissioners is to listen to what your constituents want. Your constituents clearly want the school system to be funded. Finally, I'd like to include some words from your own campaign flyers, and I quote, "Todd Johnson, Jonathan Thomas, and Jerry Simpson are well-qualified and when elected will lead a commission focused on a more vibrant economy, a lower unemployment rate, and a better quality of life." Those were your own words, gentlemen. Please live up to your words and fully fund the school system's budget request. More vibrant economy, a lower unemployment rate, and a better quality of life. That is what we are asking for. Thank you.
I believe it's Eve Laramore.
Well, I, first of all, good evening. It's Evy Jo Laramore. I grew up in Monroe. I've been working here for 19 out of my 25 years. I do live in Charlotte, and I drive an hour so I can teach the young people in this county. I've been offered job after job in Charlotte, but I come here to teach these kids. And we cannot do it without our teacher assistants. I hope you heard that. We cannot. I work at East Elementary. Our kids come to our school two and three years behind before they ever enter our door. We are not Helen Keller's miracle workers, but we sure work hard and we try. And we have people at our school that I tell you what, if they could, they would give blood to our children. They work and work and work. They do everything in their possible, everything that's possible to improve the education of our children. What really concerns me is whether it's at East Elementary or any other school in our county, we only have two options. We're going to pay for our children now and educate them, or we're going to pay for them later when they're in prison and when they're in welfare. I'm in a school that I'm trying to change. We, our staff, is trying to change the whole cycle of non-educated children, and we need your help. We need your help. If you don't understand it, please come spend some time and see how hard these teacher assistants work. Please. I choose education over welfare. I choose education over prisons. And frankly, it costs more to put a person in prison than to educate them. Now go figure that one. So we need to seriously consider where we put our funds. Thank you so much for your time.
Fred Newman.
My name is Fred Newman. I'm a Union County resident. I live in Monroe at 723 Skywatch Lane. This is Judy Pickett. She is my teacher assistant in my kindergarten class at Benton Heights. And so tonight, I stand before you as a representative of Benton Heights. But more importantly, I stand before you tonight as a representative of our children. And as a concerned citizen, I stand before you tonight as someone who is concerned about the future of our state, our country, and even our global community. Union County School's slogan is "Graduation and Globalization." And you have to understand that the decisions that you make here affect not only the future of our county, it affects the future of our state, our country, and even makes ripples across the global community. Every dollar that you decide to fund to Union County schools is an investment in our students. It's an investment in our state and in our great country and even in the global community. As a teacher, I compare the removal of my teacher assistant to the removal of the nurses in an operating room. Now I ask you tonight, which one of you would like to be in the operating room? And let's take the nurses out so that the doctor has to worry about what he's picking up and all of the details around him rather than focusing on you and having the help of those around him, surrounding him, to help you to be healthy. That's what you're doing to us, to our children, to our state, to our country, and to the global community. I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, to look to the future.
Jennifer Stringfellow.
Good evening. We thank you for being here and hearing, well, listening to us. I'm not sure if you hear us, but we do need you to listen in terms of our need for school funding and our teaching assistance. I'm sorry, I did not start with my name. I'm Jennifer Stringfellow. I reside in Mineral Springs in Union County, and I have a child in high school. As I stated before, I believe in public education, and that is why I'm here. High schools have their issues. We don't have as much in terms of the teaching assistant issue right now, but trust me, these children need to get to high school. And a foundation is a very important thing. So we can't start cutting now and expect that by the time they get to high school, we're going to have these brilliant numbers and everything is going to turn around. I've said here before that education is an investment, and we have to invest in our future. We have a lot of rhetoric. We talk about globalization, the global economy, we're global learners. You know, we say these words without understanding that when we're talking global, we're talking the challenge, we're talking technology, we're talking educated people. So for us to just sit here and talk, do the rhetoric over and over about, you know, touting what our schools are and then not be willing to fund them, I think that is very disingenuous. Right now, I am asking, and actually maybe encouraging you to consider the value of this education. You've educated us because as parents, we now know to listen so that when we hear that you're for education, you don't really mean that you support public education. We're listening because when you say you're for a better quality of life, it doesn't mean that education is your priority. And those are the things that we're asking you to consider. And yes, we will be voting, and it doesn't matter which side we voted on, you represent all of the people of Union County. So we want you to understand that this is important to us, and we're not going away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our informal comments. I'll just let you start the wave on that end. How's that?
I just want to thank you guys for continuing to come out and support the children and support the schools. And I know you know where I stand on this issue, 100% behind the kids, the teachers, the parents. Unfortunately, I'm a minority on the board, so you do need one more. So I understand the pleas that you're making. You know, one thing that I want to bring up, a parent got up here and they talked about the east versus west of Union County. That's something that's always aggravated me and that I've always been challenged by because I hear that all the time. And when I was on the school board, it was a lot different because on the school board, I'd go to the schools and I'd see all the different parts of the county and I'd get to meet all the people. And I found that there really isn't that feeling of us versus them, east versus west. It really is a united family. Being on the county commission, we're here all the time. I don't get to go out as much, so I don't get to get that feeling. But we have a unique opportunity before us because never in the history of the county that I know of has there been one issue that has united all parts of this county equally. Each of us have our own interest in different things. Some may be agriculture, some, we've had generations here, some were new, we're from New York, we're from Florida, Ohio, whatever the case may be. But this one issue, I'm not kidding you, there has never been an issue like this. We have an opportunity to show our children exactly what it means to have good government, to have representative government, and to unite and stand together for them, for their future, and how important it is, and that you cannot give up, you cannot go away. You have to continue to push and ask for representation for you guys. So my hands clap for you all. I appreciate everything that you do. I hope, as one lady spoke tonight, that not only are they hearing, but that they are listening. I'm willing to be as creative as necessary. I truly believe we're going to get the funding from the state. I truly believe that if we step up and we fund these positions, we're going to get the majority of the money back. And what a great thing to tell our children and our parents and our teachers, so. Thank you, guys, and just stay with it. It does make a difference.
Mr. Thompson.
I also want to share my appreciation for you coming out and doing what you do. I admire you tenfold, and I would share with you personal experiences from my family, but I simply won't cross the line because when I go to the school, I'm a dad. And I don't bring those experiences here to use my children for political ploy. So I would do want to thank you for what you do very much. I once taught on the community college level, and I know that's nothing like K through three. Just being a dad is challenging enough, but I do respect you for what you do. I do want to point out before I make my comments, we did receive a letter this evening, as one of the speakers alluded to, in support of the schools from the town of Wingate and the town of Marshall. And I assured the mayor of Marshall on my way in that I would acknowledge those letters once we received them, and we did receive them. There's been a lot of information flowing about, and I've done my best to try to correct that information and get the accurate information out. Some of you have heard some comments that I've made and have taken it as a slam against the school. It's far from that, and I'm going to explain that this evening. So that you know the correct dates, on June 4th is the public hearing for the budget, and then we will look statutorily at taking a vote on June 18th. So that's when you can expect those votes to occur. It's highly unlikely I'll be here during the informal comments of the next meeting, so I do want to share some real candid thoughts with you this evening. In looking at this budget situation, we saw it coming. I asked some tough questions last year. I took a lot of heat over how we were using the edge of job funds. I saw that as a Band-Aid. Glad we had it, but we knew that money was surely run out. Looking for a plan, how do we get beyond last year to this year and bridge that gap? So we didn't run into what we've got. But that is not my responsibility. It's the responsibility of the Board of Education, and I extended a hand and spoke to many of those board members. There's two ways that we can balance a budget. Number one, we can increase revenues. And you all know, I don't have to tell you, you read the papers, the federal government is broke. The state is broke. Your county government is broke. We have more debt per capita than any other county in the state of North Carolina. We also have, as many of you have alluded to, the windfall of the money from the CMC Union Hospital. Yes, it is there. We have capital needs that far exceed that, namely a jail. We're looking at at some point legal action against Union County that's going to require us to get folks off the jail. And you know what? You won't find any sympathy in my heart for a prisoner having to sleep on the floor versus educating our kids. There is no comparison in my book, but a judge isn't always going to agree with my position. And we've got to be prepared as we move forward. Also, the Department of Social Services building has got to be built. The other option is to cut expenses. And yes, I've stepped out and I've said, I believe that we can operate more efficiently. And I've got some examples that we have surfaced since last time when we received the capital request from the schools. I've been a proponent from day one that if we would outsource some of our ancillary services that did not affect the classroom, could we realize savings? The county certainly did. Anson County certainly did. Could we not? Let's just look at it. If we don't, we'll drop it. But we refuse to even look at it. But because we don't do that, we then incur capital expenses. And we've got a room here full tonight. I want to ask a question. We'll stand up and come to the podium or whatever, but just one hand. I just want to see one hand of anyone that has bought a lawnmower more than $15,000. That's my point, folks, is that we've got, we've got a capital request of three lawnmowers.
Did you invite people to come to the podium to respond?
So we've got a request of $55,000 for three lawnmowers. Maybe that's spending money wisely. My family certainly couldn't afford it. Three trucks for $90,000, I couldn't afford that. And then we've got a track that's around seven years old that we're going to resurface for $65,000. Now, my question is, folks, I'm not going to sit here and pick because I don't control the expenses. I only control part of the revenue, and that's even a small portion. And then with regards to the teacher's assistants, several of them go to church with me, many of them I see every morning on my way to work. Every morning, I see the teacher's assistants. And I got to tell you something. Commissioner Johnson said something at the last meeting that I'll never forget as long as I live, that there are teacher's assistants that touch his life more than the teachers did. And nothing against you, teachers, but I've got the opportunity every day of seeing my kindergarten teacher assistant that made a difference in my life. And so I'm passionate about the issue. I want to find the issues. I want to help fund the issues. I'm looking for a solution. Here's the problem, folks. This board balked consensus, and some of my colleagues will not admit to this, but I can show you the minutes where we took votes or got a consensus unanimously that we would not spend one-time monies for ongoing expenses. Unanimously. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just as guilty. Unanimously, we agreed we would not raise taxes. However, if some of my colleagues who want to fund teacher's assistants want to raise taxes, we have an agenda item, meeting coming up, that we can put that on there for the next meeting. Put it on there. That's fine with me. And let's tie it to the teachers. If they feel so passionately about it, it's easy to sit here and criticize and do nothing, but it's hard to come up with a plan of action. I'm looking for a plan to fund these assistants. But here's the problem, folks. There's absolutely no guarantee, and this is from the leadership of the schools, that if I wrote a check tonight, I, the county, wrote a check tonight for 6.7 million, not one teacher assistant would be saved. There's not. There's no guarantee. This is from the superintendent, and with all due respect, I don't want to point fingers, but...
Please, please.
The teacher's assistants were served notices before we were even given our first request for funding. Number two, he promised, and I appreciate his commitment to them, to let them know if anything changed by June 8th. Knowing that by the general statutes, we would adopt the budget on June 18th, we've got a timing issue. And also pointed out, and as bad as I don't want to bring it up, I will bring it up because it's referenced in here, not sure what the position of the new superintendent is. I firmly believe her heart is in the classroom. I firmly believe. I don't think there's a superintendent in the state of North Carolina that would say teacher's assistants are not important. But I don't want to speak to her, and I don't want to pull her in to this budget issue right now because I believe, and I'm going to take a step away from the budget debate for just a moment, I believe everybody needs to give her a fair chance. There are people that's already criticizing the new superintendent, and she hasn't even had the opportunity to step into the office. Give her a chance, folks. And I say that to the people that are watching here this evening as well. So the county manager and the school liaison has proposed, and this is the numbers that you will probably see, I don't want to preclude what she may hand out, but additional funding of our schools above and beyond it, 2.2 million, 1.7 million for an increase for teachers. And you know what? I'm going to tell you, in my experience, and I don't want to speak for any of you all, every teacher I've spoken to says, keep the money, give me the assistance. So I put a caveat to that, and I will encourage this board to also support the fact, if Senator Tucker, Representative Horn, and Representative McGurk come up with additional funds to help meet the gap, and if the Board of Education can find some type of efficiency somewhere, let's put that money together, and let's all work together and show people how we can work together for the betterment of our community. Folks, I've told you, we're broke. But if we can work together and make it happen, this board's willing to do that and to work with that. Last but not least, it also includes an increase of 5.267 million for capital funding versus none last year at the request of the public schools. And again, I want to welcome Dr. Mary Ellis as superintendent of Union County. She's going to do a great job, and there's no doubt about it. Last but certainly not least, my family and I had an opportunity to join the fine men and women of Wesley Chapel for the opening of their fire department last Saturday. Great event, warm event, wonderful community out there. And if you haven't had an opportunity to see that new firehouse, you should go by. It's amazing at some of the things they've got in there that'll save them money for training. And I do want to thank the men and women in uniform that risk their life every day in and out to save ours. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I wish everyone a good evening.
Mr. Keeler.
Well, I certainly can't compete with the passion of the speakers tonight, and I didn't think after the last meeting, the speeches could get any better, and they keep getting better, so. But I too like to make a plea to this board, and I regret that Commissioner Johnson isn't here, so I hope he watches the tape. Union County, we don't have a professional sports arena, we don't have a research triangle or a major university. We're not known as a financial center, we're not a tourist destination, we're not a technology hub. Yet even in the absence of those attractions and things that pull population into your area, we still have been one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States. Some will tell you it's because the taxes here are lower. Some will claim it's the small-town rural feel that attracted them. But most will tell you it was because of the reputation...
But most will tell you it was because of the reputation and the performance of the Our schools have become a very high-profile draw for residential growth, which in turn leads to retail growth and creates the labor market for industrial and business growth. This ultimately translates to new business and jobs, a more vibrant economy, lower unemployment, and a better quality of life, all of which were direct promises made in the last election. Because we don't have the other typical inducements, the quality of education drives the entire economic health of this county. And that in turn determines the revenues, the tax base, and ultimately, the tax rate. The issue of school funding has been discussed, spiritually debated, and is very emotional for a lot of people, myself included. It affects not only those that have school-aged children, but every citizen in this county in terms of property values and the desirability of this county to others today and in the future. Every citizen in this county. It strikes me that every time there's a disagreement on an issue, Commissioner Rogers and I are accused of playing politics. Well, look around, this is government, and this is a political board. Everything we do is political. However, I did find my flyer when I ran four years ago, and it clearly states that I stand for funded schools and emphasis on education. So when I get up here and talk in favor of the schools, it's because I did promise that, and I'm standing behind my promise. The current proposal of one-time funding of teacher assistants, while I admit, and I have said to people that I've spoken to, is not the most desirable solution. It isn't. But at the end of the day, it's simple. We have the means to help stop or at least delay this damage to our children's education and the overall quality of life to the citizens of this county. We can pass the buck and the blame, get hung up on semantics and control. We can decide to preserve, or we can decide to preserve and protect the number-one economic driver in the county and take care of our kids and our future. It has been said that the monies from the hospital belong to all the taxpayers, to the people. And so far, the only request that I have had via email, telephone, and in comment, in public comment here, is to preserve the integrity of our school system, especially for our youngest children. The voices of the people, and now the municipalities, as I received two things from municipalities just this evening, have been very clear, very consistent, and very specific. I believe we have two more meetings before we adopt the budget, and I urge every commissioner sitting up here to put personalities and blame aside, revisit the promises that we all made, examine our priorities, and do the right thing. There is a problem, nobody's saying there's not, but we can't make the children pay while we're figuring it out, and we need to keep the schools in power.
I had a 4H livestock specialist once, name was Jim Butler. You're familiar with 4H? He worked at the university, and he worked with all the state livestock programs. And he carried a cigar in the corner of his mouth, but he was a jewel. And he told me, just about the time I became an agent or first went to work for the university, he said, "Share something with your son." Said, "Anytime you put your hand on the head of a child," said, "you put it on the heart of their momma and daddy." And I raised three, and that's the darn truth. That's certainly the truth. And this issue is emotional, and it's emotional to those parents and grandparents and the people in the schools that work with those kids every day. I said when I became a commissioner that the most difficult task that we have as a commissioner is dividing public interest and personal interest. And every two weeks when I get this book, and every two weeks when somebody walks to that podium, it's a battle between that individual or group's personal interest and public interest. And so this is a difficult issue. I've received probably thousands of emails with regard to this issue, but I've received many, many emails, many calls, and you may not believe it, but from the opposite side. Here's a letter right here. I won't bother reading it. Just got it today. No, I won't. I'll be happy to share, well, I better ask him before I share it, but I'll be happy to if he'll allow me. The point being is it is a difficult issue. I have worked with Chairman Arp and sat with he and Superintendent Davis and gone over numbers and heard numbers and numbers and numbers. And last meeting, we approved some support for that. We have that support on board, and I look forward to getting to the bottom of this funding issue, and hopefully it'll work out in the best interest of everyone, in the public interest of Union County. So I thank you very much, and motion to adjourn.